This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, we're recording. Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Easthampton City Council Finance Committee meeting. It's 5:04 Wednesday, May 22nd. Thanks, everyone, for joining. We have a whole bunch of appropriations and a few other things to get through. Counselor.
Former.
I think you get to stay, keep that right, but it's called retired president, we still call the president, so. You still get to be counselor. Well, anyway.
Chairman.
Uh.
Counselor.
Call me whatever you want.
All right.
Oh, laughs.
Dan has asked that we do this appropriation first, so seems like the least we can do. And this, uh, this one is, uh. Oh, I'm sorry, before we do that, do we have minutes?
No.
No, okay. Mayor Communication.
Nope.
Okay. All right. So we have a $9,800 appropriation from capital stabilization. This is for the ad hoc building committee. And then if you'd like to.
To update you, the mayor gave the committee. The ad hoc senior building committee. The task of coming up with a report on feasibility of constructing and citing a new senior center. One of my jobs is to visit other senior centers. And I can tell you that in an understatement, look, our senior center is woefully inadequate. The senior centers that I visited are beautiful. Say as an aside, that was really impressive to me was that South Hadley has this huge room with a huge yoga program going. We need to do this. So our first task is to report to the mayor on how, where, when we should do this, how much might cost, et cetera, recommend things like that. This appropriation will help us also do a report that involves our own seniors and getting their feedback. So one of the points, I'll just go through some of the points Cindy asked me to do this, by the way, because she was our consultant. We would hire a consultant, a focus group facilitation, community meeting facilitator. We would get software, survey software, if Google Forms is insufficient, a higher level Survey Monkey subscription. Whatever we need, because the survey of the seniors is a very important aspect of the report. Passage to mail out surveys. Printing, print surveys and reports for the public if they cannot be done in-house at our machine, having publisher insert survey if it cannot be done in-house, and supplies. So it's not a lot of money, but it will help us facilitate this report.
The charge of the ad hoc committee is exactly how counselor, former counselor is stated. And the, a big, my, there are meant, all those reasons to ask, but also on building senior centers, it's even more difficult than building a library. And the technical support and the data. Of paperwork and what's had to go, and this volunteer group is kind of corralling all the possibilities and putting together really a report at the level where we don't have staff to do it, but it's kind of a one-time thing. And after this, there will be a formal, you know, public call for a senior center building committee. That will go down the path of, of what, what you see on the state level with the Department of Elder Affairs. But this is like the, the early work, this is kind of pretty safe to the limit.
Sorry, this is just, folks online apparently are having some audio issues, so we may want to just make sure we speak louder when we are talking, because something is, this happened last night as well, so I'm not sure what's.
Is it the fan? It's possible, but. But let's.
Isn't that supposed to be on, you turn on my.
Yes.
So is that the right one that's on?
Yes, that's exactly the right one.
Well, it looks like it's bouncing.
So I think maybe just speaking louder, I think that might.
Okay. We'll all try and project our voices.
Can you speak louder? Well.
Counselor Gomez, did I see your hand?
Yes, thank you for recognizing me. And just quick, is about the audio, it's going on and off. I don't know why, we can hear you clearly when it's working, but for any reason, after a couple minutes, it went off and we're no capable to listen anything.
Have a connector.
Maybe, yes, so I'll look into it. Thank you.
Just to follow up what the mayor just said. We are getting for free some consultation, that's incredible. The architect of, I think, Wilberham Center is going to come in and give us a lot of information on it. And consultations from a lot of people, so. We need it, we need the funds to make it work.
Well, if neither here or there, but if, uh, if you're doing some survey work and you would like some help with that, I do have some professional experience with survey design. And would be happy to volunteer to help out in any way I can.
Hey, I'm not sending you. I have no idea what.
Survey monkeys.
Survey monkey, a Google device?
Uh, it's a different one, there's a bunch of different ones, but, uh, yeah. Okay. Anything else? Any question, more questions?
No question, but I think this is great and I would like to support it, given the fact that I think our current senior center is in need of amenities, replacements, all sorts of things, right? So anything we can do, I'd like to be able to support this.
All right, well, I would entertain a motion to recommend to the full council this appropriation of $9,800 for the ad hoc, COA ad hoc building committee. So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I resisted saying aye. Thank you all, it was nice to see you.
It's great to see you, Dan. Hope your shoulder heals up fast.
I do too. I'm sick of this, although I'm becoming more ambidextrous because I have to. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye, Omar.
Bye. Okay, so. There's out of the remaining items, I wanted to just sort of pull the room to see. There, there's sort of broadly, there's, I see there's, there's sort of three things here. Uh, one is a conversation about our associated appropriations, and then the third is miscellaneous. And I don't have a strong preference in the order that we go in, but I was thinking maybe, uh, I mean, is there anyone that needs to get out of here right away, or Greg, would you like just to start with, uh, or, sorry, do you have?
That would be great, yes.
Okay, so I don't, now which one? There's the, uh, your one is the, uh, there's.
He needs for the.
Yes, there, there you go.
So what happened, we received an appropriation to upgrade the second floor. Gave us even a better quote. And we were able to hire an electrician to do part of the contract, so we ended up having more money. That now we would like to use to, to improve other pieces. So one thing that we learned is that we put one of our computers and we need to now buy a better computer.
This has been happening.
They're still there, but for some reason not.
Yeah, this happens at all the meetings.
It's just disconnect.
It'll be back in a sec.
They're there, so it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Yeah, we can still see you.
So we would like, so one of the things that we learned is that we need to replace the computer that we provided in there for a computer that is able to provide for output, so we need to actually, we are going to be able to use the money allocated for that room, for that device. But then for the rest of the money, we would like to be able to use that to, for example, upgrade the computers in the safety complex, but in the police department, in the fire department, so it gives us a little bit more freedom to use that money. And we understand that's the process that we need to follow.
So if I understand this correctly, these are funds you already have. There's another project that came in under budget, and so you're planning to use, take these funds that are already in this one fund for this one project and move them over to be used for replacing some computers and, uh, is it just, oh, replacing 80% of the desktop computers?
Yes.
What I'm seeing here, because I wonder, how many computers are we talking at, 80%, that's probably, all right.
That may change a little bit because now we need to replace the computer that is at the safety complex providing the output, so it may have to be adjusted a little bit.
Okay. I mean, that sounds fine to me, it's cool that you came under budget on that thing. Counselors, do you have any questions about this? I would entertain a motion to approve request for $29,188.05 for public safety site improvement. So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So why don't we turn to the enterprise stuff now? It won't come back. I'm just gonna read these in the order that they come off of the packet. So the first one I have is $60,642.21 from free cash to building operations. Uh, do you want to look for this one?
Uh, sure, again. So 75 Oliver Street, we've seen about just under $700 in expenses, that building's not heated, just very minimal electricity and that's relatively minor. Maple Street School, it's cost about 20, just over $21,000 to maintain and kind of, you know, have custody of that building for the year. Pepin School. Yeah, Maple, $21,000, Pepin just over $21,000 also, just minimal, minimal heat, electricity, some boiler HVAC repairs and bills for drying up one of the bathrooms after a pipe broke on the top floor. Center, just under $20,000, so.
Okay. Seems reasonable. Uh, mayor, can I just ask, where are we on actually moving these building, like, transfer these buildings? I don't, I don't know that.
We're about two and a half years out. Um, we'll own them because of the LDA that we have to work through and the condition that the Pepin, the Pepin School has on it being salt, having public access to it. Um, is we have to go through an ROI process. It all stops, nothing can happen until we sign the LDA and the 90 days of due diligence starts. And then we move towards closing and we're thinking two and a half years.
LDA stands for?
Land Disposition Agreement.
Okay.
So we, um, we put out a request of interest, I think you guys are copied on it, for that public space. We have not received anything, I need to, the end date was coming. Um, and because it's a condition of, in, in the document, we, for the developer, we need to make sure 110% that we have done whatever, and I'm not like pushing off anybody, our council, like, we have to show that we have tried to meet the public expectation and conditions as it went forward out of city council. Um, for a couple of reasons, one, it's a public building in process, but two, the developer has to wait because if, um, they go forward with their designs for national state historical tax credits, you can't go back. I mean, you can, but you can't go back and say, oh, guess what? We don't have a public use for that space, so we want to add two more units, or we want to change the design plans. It doesn't work that way, we need to meet the conditions, show that we met the conditions or not, and then Richard at Arch will then submit his final applications for historic tax credits, I'm sure low income tax credits as well, so. We've missed two rounds of, of those tax credits for the property and we're about two years behind, but, um, we're hoping, and not just because of a whole bunch of different stuff, but, um, yeah, we're, I haven't signed the, the land disposition agreement. Make, you know, what public use is and that we've offered a fair, public message out there that if somebody has a proposal to use it, then, then they should put it in agreement. And that, or a proposal, and that may have happened in the last four days, because I wasn't here, I didn't ask Michael O'Connor, but that's what's missing out. So we're thinking LDA hopefully by the end of the summer, 90-day due diligence, and, um, and then about two years from then. So we'll be, we are, we do get money at the end of this, that we'll not over what we've, but it is, you know, we want the best possible little project, that's the deal we made, it's a good deal. Like 100% behind it, just things don't go.
Right.
But we don't get that money until we close, the $1.2 million like that, like close like a housing closing. So when I say two years, we're two years from, we think from that closing.
I see. And, and Maple?
They're all in the same bucket.
Okay. So they're all gonna close at the same time?
Yeah, we tried to separate it out, Pepin, but the developer, his proposal is as if it's one big building, because he gets the, the number of units and costs, you know, the, the cost, it's more efficient cost-wise because he's buying more and stuff like that, it just didn't make sense.
Okay. So we can probably expect a couple more of these in the meantime, but, uh, I mean, we got to do it.
It's bare minimum to keep them in the shape that they're in, basically.
All right, well, I would entertain a motion to recommend this to the full council. So moved. Motion second, all in favor? Aye. Passes three to zero. Next up, we have a transfer from capital stabilization. Looks like this $12,000, this is for an LED sign grant. $115,000 for brush truck grant and $160,000 for SCBA grant. Chief, I see you're online, is this, uh, is this, this is a firefighter or fire department one, or?
Yeah, they're not mine, but none of what you just mentioned is mine.
Okay, great, well, chief.
Yeah, so thank you, is my audio coming through okay?
It is.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you. As you just kind of alluded to, so those are all the matching amounts for a number of different homeland security grants that the fire department applied for last year. So there's really three distinct projects that come out of this. The first one is a matching amount for a brand-new brush truck. The current brush truck is a 1985 brush truck that was given to the city of East Hampton back about 15 years ago and was redesigned and converted into a brush truck. The second project was replacement of all of our self-contained breathing apparatuses and the air cascade system. The air cats, the air cascade system is over 40 years old and is basically coming to the, has exceeded its life expectancy. And the SCBAs are 15 years old this year. And that is the last year based on national standards that we can actually use these firefighting equipment. And then the last project, the third project, is LED signboard, which also incorporates the purchase of some smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors for installation around the community. We've continued over the last four years to build out our public outreach and education campaigns across the city. And one of the things that we looked at and worked with FEMA representatives was how to do more outreach. And one of the recommendations was based on our location, not only on Pace and Avenue, but also near the bike pass, bike path was the LED signboard to incorporate fire safety messages and public outreach and educational campaigns. So that's what all those funds passing just for the council and for the public to understand, all of these items excluding the LED signboard. The other ones were all, all have been on our capital improvements list for the city for every year that I've been there, and having the ability to obtain these through federal grants certainly is a benefit. The mayor has been very supportive with this and certainly we don't enter into or apply for any federal homeland security grants that require a matching amount without the approval of the mayor first, knowing that these matching amounts are always required in some aspect. And I'm happy to answer any questions on any three of those projects.
Counselors, any questions?
No questions, just comment, um, you know, I've had the opportunity of visiting the, um, fire station and seeing the equipment and talked with the chief before and, you know, these are obviously needed items, um, you know, the brush truck alone is, I think, probably considered vintage, right? So I think whatever we can do to kind of continue to support and make sure that, you know, ensure safety of not only firefighters, but also, um, residents in the community who might need her, you know, support from the brush truck, et cetera, so support this.
Okay. Yes, I feel like, um, I was born in, uh, 1988 and we should not have probably a whole lot of vehicles that are older than me in the city, so, uh, I'm, I'm in favor of this. Anything else? I'd, uh, recommend, or I'd, uh, I'd, uh, entertain a motion to recommend this appropriation to the full council. Second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, motion passes.
Here.
Uh, okay, uh, the next one, we have a $200,000 appropriation from free cash to a variety of snow-related items.
Sure, so snow, every year we have to close out the snow and ice account. As, you know, with the end of the snow and ice season for the fiscal year. This year we need, looks like it's just under $200,000 that we need, but the 200 closes everything out. Wasn't much of a winter, but we had some longer duration events that required treatment, and we went through a lot of salt, time and contractor equipment associated with, you know, with treating the roads during those longer duration events and some just normal mobile expenses at the schools, things like that, so.
Any questions?
Can you walk?
Yeah. I'm always astounded by how much salt costs, but there's not much we can do about that.
It's not getting cheaper either, no, nothing, I mean, most of everything I have in front of me tonight is just because costs are escalating everywhere we look.
All right.
I think there was a couple of incidents as too where it was like a possibility of, and then you.
You pre-treat.
Yeah, you pre-treat and then like nothing happens, right, but that's, that's the cost of kind of.
Safety.
Really, yeah.
Yeah.
If it saves someone from crashing industry, it was worth it, so. Okay. Yeah, this is something we see pretty much every year, it's just the way that we can structure this, so I have no.
All the trash pickup for the city buildings and the school buildings, so. We've seen some increased costs from the disposal companies. It's kind of all there to it.
Yeah. I know this is gonna get a little redundant, but we need to talk it through.
Yeah, I get it.
So.
Signal is over full or it was up, they've gotten so sophisticated, they take a picture of the dumpster if it's over full, so they can charge you for the additional.
Wow.
Everybody's after every.
Entertained a motion to recommend this to the full council. Moved. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the next one we have is $23,000 to be transferred from free cash to the streetlight account.
So most of that is payments to GLC.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Changes were made to the way our solar contracts and the compensation the city receives for the solar field on Oliver Street in our membership in the, a solar array in Deerfield. So we have to make payments to a company called GLC, and Clean Capital actually owns the solar equipment on Oliver Street. And then historically, we would get a credit on our electric bill. However, now the credits are coming in the form of checks, and those checks are then closing out, hoping to free cash.
Right.
And we've changed our budget for next year, so this should be the last year that I have to come for. And a lot of what is in front of you tonight is making up for those solar credits now coming as checks. I see, the checks have to come in, they don't go right to our budget, and then get to go to pay a bill, they have to close. I have a breakdown here somewhere, I hope you brought it, it's like, in solar credit check, I think it's nine, over $900,000. I don't have my stack here. I had it. Maybe I'll put it on my desk, but, that right here, $997,294, like, uh, we've received in solar credit payments.
For the.
Solar credits as cash since June 23rd, '22.
Okay. So the money's there, it's just not in your budget, and so you need.
Exactly, that's a good way to.
Okay. Straightforward enough, any questions? All right, I entertain a motion to recommend this appropriation to the full council. So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye. Enterprise retained earnings to water.
Yep. Uh, same, so most of that is for GLC payments. The solar checks are coming in, they're not, it's not in our budget and we're paying, we have to now pay Eversource because the credits aren't there. The amount that we pay it, that was there to allot to GLC, Eversource, this rates have gone up and it's kind of like a transfers.
I see.
It sucks, right, the money is there, just not in the budget.
I see. Okay. Any questions? All right, I would entertain a motion. All right, uh, I'd entertain a motion to recommend uh this appropriation to the full council.
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Just as an aside, I think when um, when we get to uh the public hearing on these, I'll try and group all the ones that are related to that so that you can give that presentation once and say, this is why we're doing this one, this one, this one, and this one, so that it'll just make things a little bit smoother. Okay, uh, so the next uh item is uh twelve thousand dollars uh from free cash to building operations.
Sure, so we've had some, we've, we've entered into a preventative maintenance agreement for the HVAC systems in this building and this public safety complex, given the investment we've made there the last couple of years. Uh, but it was very prudent to do that. And there, so we have a quarterly maintenance um, basically visit where technician from New England Mechanical comes through the building and, you know, if they see, it's just more, more preventive rather than waiting to react to a failure. So we'll see a pump starting to leak and we change, and we'll have that changed out or whatever the, whatever the issue may be. Uh, we'll try to make some repairs. I mean, the safety complex still might, I guess it's like a relatively new building, but it is twenty-five, you know, coming up on twenty-five years old, so you know, so a lot of the things in there are just starting to show their age and need to be replaced, so um in that kind of due diligence, if you will, just we've incurred some other expenses that needed to be, or things that the Honeywell project and the change over to the new systems identified, it's like, well, we need to put this in, but we can't, we can't do X before we do Y, and then we have to fix this before we can do that. There wasn't things that were within their scope that we had to handle on outside, so.
See. Uh, any questions, counselors?
Oh, I'm, I'm, I think this is. Just expensive. HVAC work is expensive, no matter how you look at it, but um, that's why I want to protect the investment we made.
Yeah.
Comes with the Honeywell work, it's significantly more comfortable in this building.
Yeah, no, it's a lot better than my office. And you still have to be able to do a bunch of these sorts of things than, you know, have a crisis situation that ends up costing a whole lot of money all at once, you know? We can probably most years find twelve thousand dollars fixed as.
Yes.
Um, okay, I would uh entertain a motion to recommend this appropriation with the full council.
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, next one we have is uh three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars from enterprise retained earnings that's going to go to wastewater energy slash electricity, wastewater professional services, and wastewater treatment plant chemicals.
Sure, so again, a big part of that is the GLC payments, about a hundred thousand. Um, some see with the solar credits not there, the electric bills that now need to be accounted for, so a lot of it, ever source payments. There's um escalation clauses in our contract for sludge disposal with Synagro for wastewater treatment plant sludge. And they've been exercising all those and warning us of expecting prices to go higher because of new P-FAS regulations. And so just chemical increases we're seeing in chemical costs, uh, chemical costs across for for um, much every chemical we use at the wastewater. Hope it is uh solar GLC payments and sludge.
And for the sludge, is that cost that have been incurred or you, you, you're anticipating those and so we're.
What we need to, to, to finish out the fiscal year and pay some invoices that we're behind on.
I see. Okay. Uh, any questions, counselors? None? Uh, I uh would entertain a motion to recommend this appropriation to the full council.
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next one is uh four thousand dollars uh from free cash to recycling.
Uh, so we have. We just don't have, we just need a little bit more money in the budget to finish out the year for hazardous waste disposal recycling. We have a program where residents can go dispose of thirty dollars a year worth of hazardous, hazardous waste at NEDT in Westfield. We need to have a little bit more money in that account to finish out the year, plus we'll take fluorescent bulbs and things of that nature at the highway department and cover the cost to get rid of them.
See. What's kind of one? Um, uh, okay, good, is it, uh, was this program more heavily utilized uh this year than usual and then?
Nah, it's kind of about, right about this every year. Don't advertise it a whole lot because we don't have a ton of money in the budget to do it, but it is good, it's a good service, like people call and ask and. Yeah.
Great. Um, any questions, counselors? Uh, well, I would entertain a motion to recommend this appropriation to the full council.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, anything else? Nothing, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, the next up is a hundred and ten thousand dollars uh from free cash to fuel.
So the DPW handles fuel for the entire city, clean gas and diesel fuel. So, we. Fifteen thousand to cover oil, that was actually paid for for uh that one Center Street School to heat there. That building has to stay minimally heated for the fire sprinkler systems.
Okay, any questions, counselors? All right, I would entertain a motion to uh recommend this appropriation to the full council. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um. Is that, is that all of, all of your stuff?
Uh, one, I, oh, I think that's it for me, yes.
Okay. Well.
Yep. Have questions about the other ones, I can't help. I mean, I'll try, but.
I'm sure you can give us your opinion.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it was definitely pretty true.
Well, it don't feel uh like you have to leave, if you know.
Can't tell my family that too. Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Okay, so um. I just, I want to be, we have um forty-nine minutes until this uh next, uh until this room is steamed by somebody else, so. What we've all said is, if this goes over and we don't finish everything, we'll try and figure something out uh next week, but uh I, I think we can probably get everything done, it's just, uh, I just wanted to uh just make sure everyone's aware that we are, we do have a hard stop. Um. Mayor, would you prefer to go, just so these are all your.
If we could go through the rest of the appropriations and leave out the appropriation I asked into the account that was not created that.
Okay.
We could bunch those together.
Yeah.
So we can get, you know, I'd like to get what I can forward to the full recommendation, full council, and then hopefully like um pass through the account and the instructions.
Okay, perfect. All right, uh, well, let's start with uh twenty thousand, two hundred and forty dollars from free cash uh to uh part-time inspection, gas slash plumbing slash wire and temporary.
Upping the, the actual amounts that they get, the number of folks we need, and then to fill in with the activity, so this, we don't foresee this amount being asked for like every year, this is a, this is very similar to like a, a new contract where we, there's a first-year gap, we knew there would be a gap with the stuff going on, this is the.
Okay. Uh, counselors, any questions? So, uh, I would recommend, uh, or I would entertain a motion to recommend this appropriation of the full council. So moved. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass three, zero. Uh, the next up is uh thirty thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and sixty-seven cents from free cash to the FY twenty-one COVID nineteen vaccine.
Yeah, the, uh, a lot of fun with federal government on this one, um. Who, who would have ever thought they don't reimburse for vaccines or related expenses? They don't, um, rule changed a lot, I'm trying not to scream, so I'm smiling. Um, and there were expenses that we charged, especially early on. The hundred and twenty is another great example that I felt very sure under the rules that I read um that we were okay, and those rules changed. And we have to cover the expenses. Um. Yeah, I, so the vaccine grant, this one really just blows my mind because it's so clearly connected to COVID response, like vaccines.
What could possibly be more connected?
Yeah, yeah, no, I was gonna say.
Some of the things they um said that it was really just an additional cost for normal operations, they didn't consider it extra for the vaccine.
I'm not, uh, there's some stuff I want to say and I'm worried that if I said it, it would sound like it's directed at, at.
So if I understand this correctly, these were vaccine. And we've received reimbursement like throughout the, especially with the early, this, there are lots of bunches. With the earlier in in the uh pandemic, the more restricted the money was, and then they really started to dial it down on what could or could not be used. The new money came out, like ARPA for instance, and the, you know, it's like, what do you need to do, make the argument and, and go for it, and this is, this one is mind-boggling because the detail on it are all medical supplies, we made the argument of like, okay, right, you could use gloves in a million different situations. We're going through more gloves because it's a pandemic, um, giving vaccines or, and whatnot, so it's um. This one simies me. Um, you know, I, yeah, the next one. We'll talk about that when we get there.
Um, well, this one is, I guess, um. A- a- any other questions? I, I feel like I have so many, but I don't know that it's worth even.
And the other amazing thing about this um is like you can spend money and you can't spend money in the rules. But even if they say no, you can negotiate and you negotiate things down and reclassify them. So this was not the first number. This is the lowest number we got where we just kind of tapped out and said, all right, and the same with the, the one hundred and twenty.
Yeah.
It's a really, I have a lot of commentary about what will happen next and what we see coming actually with climate and uh medical events that, not for this meeting. And, and this is foretelling what we'll see out of me and FEMA.
Yeah. Okay, well. Unless anyone has anything else, I guess I would uh entertain a motion to recommend this appropriation of the full council.
So moved.
All right, uh, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, you thought of the one twenty six. Uh, the next is a hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and six cents from capital stabilization to the FY twenty COVID nineteen FEMA grant.
Yeah. Yeah. All me, you know. Um, so, you know, you can fight City Hall, but you're probably not going to win, you can fight the federal government, but you're not going to win, so under the early um guidance on, on CARE Act money and whatnot, I bought um three vehicles. One for the senior center, um, one for health department and a fifteen-passenger van for general use that we used for. Back for vehicles. And um, I was upset and I fought it all the way to about three months ago when uh our treasurer said, we gotta file something and we, we've gotten a lot of money back except for your three vans, and they're called my three vans, so right now the vans still remain. You know, um, actually, the fifteen passenger is, um, the athletic department uses a lot to, to get kids, we, you know, small group of kids not having to get um, uh, rent a van, um, or whatnot. The um, health department still uses their van for a whole bunch of stuff and um, they are all being used the way intended. Um, and my argument was they were only bought because of COVID and an extreme need that could not be filled, like the it was like, if you cannot lease vehicles, you can buy them. And we didn't, so we did. And then September of twenty twenty-one came, one, two, and they're like, yeah, no, that, that rule, well, now it's finalized and you can't buy vehicles. And yeah, I, me. And I definitely on this side of the room got, are you sure, mayor? Like, yes. So, just want to be clear with that. Right.
I guess if you wanted to look at it in a positive, optimistic light, if you had come right now and asked for this free cash money to buy these vehicles, we probably would say yes, so it's not like you know.
This great view, I mean, we, we were able to get rid, I mean, it, I guess in the long term, it's, it's okay, but it's um, if we were another community or communities around us who are in much tighter places, it's a hunk of money. I mean, this is not, you know, I mean, even the thirty, I mean, this isn't small change, and I, you know, and I, I kind of go back in my head of like if we were to spend that on vehicles, we'd be wanting to buy. Um, we could price the uh. We, um, we would cover it out of state and federal funds for COVID a hundred percent and have refused to pay this bill until the very last minute, where it was going to be more expensive not to file and just be done.
Clarify, so the, the, the rules change before you purchase the vehicles or after you?
After.
And then, just to clarify also, are the license plates, mayor, one, two, and three, is that how, okay.
That's last place. That, yeah, I shouldn't have, yeah, that, um. I, yeah, so, uh, yeah, so the, there was no final rule until actually we got all the money, so there were interim, 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 final interim, and and, and again, you know, the yeah. I, I really wanted me to see your town that didn't have to do this on some level and I know they are, I mean, just watching those rules. Um, so.
Yeah. I mean, these things happen, and it's sad that they happen, they happen, but I, I do believe that those offices need vehicles, right? Um, they obviously are providing services to our residents and to the community. And more importantly, I don't think that we should be using employees should be using their own vehicles for various purposes, right? So for city business, so I'm supportive of this, I mean, I'm disappointed that the rules changed and um, that's a unfortunate reality, but I also think that these offices need vehicles to be able to support residents.
Yeah, and the fifteen-passenger van, we, we've used it in all, all sorts of uh, of things, um, a cool uh unintended cool con, is that there are small groups of students who are going on field trips, they never would have because it was just so hard to get that small of a vehicle, so it's kind of, it, it's cool, that, that's happened, it's a circular path, but cool.
Yeah. Yeah.
Me too.
I would, unless anyone has anything else, I would entertain a motion to recommend this appropriation of the whole council. So moved. Motion second, all in favor? Aye. Just three to zero. Okay, next up, we've got twenty thousand dollars for veterans' cash benefits.
Yeah, this was the it's what it's for. We pay out a certain amount of benefits. We try state level benefits. We get some reimbursed. Sometimes we don't. Veterans come in and out of the city as residents. We are bound and happy to support them with the state benefits. And, you know, the the formula is very rigid. But it's hard to predict. You just don't know who's coming in. It's not back payments, something got filed too late and you can't get the reimbursement, that sort of thing. So.
Any questions? I would entertain a motion to recommend this appropriation of the full council. So moved. Motion second, all in favor? One more. Seventeen thousand dollars from free cash for professional or planning professional services.
Yeah, this is, most folks know our city planner left the city employee in April. And very graciously offered to carry through on some key applications we have for is working on T C Top, on Ferry Street, wrapping up a little bit on some of the Union and Main Street things. If it goes into the next fiscal year, it'd be minimum, it would be to respond to the grants we get and just to make and that sort of thing. So we're I decided to ask for this money rather than augment to the budget. We've had a lot of staff move down there. I wanted to end that year, the budget year is without as many fluffles or bumps or whatnot and ask for this stuff from cash instead of switching stuff.
Any question? Second, all in favor? All right. Finally, opioid funds. So just to give a recap of where we were as of last week. There had been a request for immediate consideration to establish this account. And I think Counselor Kuzensky had made had asked whether the funds that are coming out of this account would be subject to appropriation. And when we learned that they were not, I felt like this warranted a discussion in committee. And the reason well, part of the reason is that I recently saw a program about this where they were talking about how these funds have been distributed across the nation. And in many cases, the funds were not reaching people who had been harmed by the misconduct of the opioid manufacturers who were paying settlements. So there was an example in New York City of these funds just getting used to fill potholes, which we all love filling potholes. But that's not really what they're there for. Or in some other communities, these funds were used to buy gear for law enforcement to potentially arrest people who were using or just of the behavior of some of these companies and I think there was, some of us had some concerns and just to reiterate, those concerns largely stem from the fact that these funds, from my understanding, are going to be continuing coming to the city for like eighteen years or something like that. So we're going to go through probably a few mayors. And we don't know who those mayors and then to this cause. It's more just a matter of, as a council, do we feel comfortable with the idea that these checks will be written in perpetuity with maybe there's some state oversight, maybe there's some federal oversight. There will not be upon the establishment of this fund, any council oversight for the rest of the history of this expenditure, and at least not in the form of appropriations that have to be, perhaps mayors will I'd receive the information that both you sent to me and I read through that. And I certainly don't doubt from that, that this is completely proper and legal. Like, that's not at all what is at question. I guess what I'm wondering about is, it seems from what I had read that the city could also and correct me if I'm wrong about this, that the city could establish a revolving account for these funds that would be subject to appropriations and that would have that oversight. And I guess I would be a hundred percent comfortable with that for it to be this revolving fund that has zero oversight for these funds that are going to be going on for so So I guess that's my sort of broad where I am on this. And I I'm sure you all know a lot more about this than me. I am whatever, but this is where I am. This is where my discomfort was where I didn't necessarily want to send this forward on first reading.
Yeah, I mean, just the overall thought and then certainly defer to Jessica, who's doing the reporting now, but also the nature of the account and the administrative back and forth. I mean, to the we are bound as a party to a lawsuit that we will receive money and we will only do certain things to it. And we can get you those lawsuits and the settlements. It is it is very exact and direct. So there are, I think, you and I, there are some there are examples, we're all kind of waiting to see what happens, but there are examples of expenditure of these monies in other municipalities that seem not to pass the smell test as being direct to the population, harm, harm reduction, prevention, treatment, support. And the focus intent of the settlement were to like first person, primary source, in the thick of it, sort of thing. And we'll see. So that's kind of happening. And the fact that that's happening and being questioned so early into the distribution of these proceeds gives me hope to your and we're still reporting. And if we don't report, like, we know about it. It's like, and the AG is on it. It's a separate division. The request for the account as it was put forward is really the immediacy of what we're facing. You know, I had sent some of the figures in fiscal year twenty-three. Tapestry dispersed three hundred and eight thousand needles in Hampshire County. What I've since learned about that is the three hundred and eight should not be based on the assumption that it's heroin. Where to stay high, maybe you shoot up one, two, or three times. And I don't say this, I was told this by actually a person. If it's fentanyl, you could be shooting up as many as ten to fifteen times because you only stay high for a couple of hours. And so the number of those needles and whatnot and and the folks who do that program, tapestry, and there are others keep up with the sheer need of that and staffing and then the education, the follow-up and the whatnot, the wound care. You know, we need the money yesterday. And we need some of the money for good reason, has checks and balances. This particular account that the Department of Revenue and Department of Local Services kind of put together as an option was very thoughtful. We waited forever for it. And fighting where the crisis is happening and being in houses. And we can lose the money fast. I mean, I, and I'm comfortable with that because the money is so restricted. I mean, this is, I think about cannabis being restrictive, that money, this is nothing in comparison. Money or miss spending, it's like, it's just, we would lose a hunk of it and we would have to pay the cost of what we do. So.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, so it kind of sounds like those checks and balances are in place already, just on a state and federal level, not necessarily at the council level. Those are already in place.
So the federal the money, like on a national level, basically all goes to our attorney general. And then each municipality, we negotiated once it was settled with the state about who we get what percent. So we get forty, the state gets sixty. The state does the federal and national reporting, but we need to report into the AG. So I don't want people to think we're not the folks that we're responsible reporting to are the attorney general.
But we are responsible for reporting.
Oh, yeah.
It's like, here's the money, have fun.
Yes.
Okay.
No.
So those are
And Jessica can speak to.
You can't just say like, oh, we spent, you know, fifty dollars on this one. It has to be like, we spent, you know, forty-nine ninety-nine on this one thing, you know, very, very particular. And there's luckily, we haven't, we just had to say, yes, we've gotten this money. We haven't spent any yet. But there are different tabs for the reporting on what we spent it on. Did we collaborate with the community? Who did we have on the committee? Who gave us information? Where did we get, like, very detailed?
Thank you.
Your way.
The two of you, since largely you're the ones who are reporting and managing kind of the account, do you feel comfortable with the guidelines that the AG has laid out with how these funds will be monitored and spent?
Yeah, so I'm going by this bulletin twenty twenty-three seven, which was part of that email which was sent to him. I do have copies. It states in here that we are allowed as a city auditor in town account and director of counts, who's Deb Wagner from DOR. It states here that we can set up a special revenue account for this and it can be expanded without further appropriation at the direction of the chief executive officer, only for the purpose of identified in said settlement agreement. So it's very specific. The spending is going to be specific. It will be more controlled. And they haven't sent the regulation yet for the audit, but I can guarantee you this is going to be one of the federal auditors to give report to them on behalf of the cities and towns. So I think it's still in the early stages. We still have to see how it's going to be.
I did also just email the three of you the link to the Attorney General's site on opioid. There's a lot of information on there.
Thank you very much.
I was also, if I could add to the so there's a, like the counties, then the states, then the municipalities all had their own track of lawsuits. Because of the way Massachusetts is, so some municipalities in some states got the money directly. Like, this is your settlement. Boom, this is it. If you were a certain kind of state of Commonwealth, the money had to go to the AG and the AG had to say, oh, just give it directly to the cities. And RIG did not say that. And negotiated even stricter terms for us to get the money, which that was, I mean, was interesting. So there are things that my counterparts are doing in Connecticut and in New York that you might read about that we can't even do here. And it's about the focus really, you know, the state agreement that kind of pulls together all of the lawsuit settlements is really like, I just go back to being a primary source, first person. Like focus on who needs help, what can we do, how do we educate? Other sort of things like that. So it is, it's just, I would hate for somebody to get on the internet right now and Google what other states A lot of the settlements go out like eighteen years. At first it was like thirty years. Some of the settlements, and I've agreed to, will have bunched. You know, instead of having to pay out over so many years, have bunched everything. And then a smaller one. And so you're not waiting that much our time and we can get the dollars onto, you know, into the community. So you know, we anticipate the majority of this settlement money to come in the next ten years. And there are still lawsuits to be settled. The amount will go up more as things get settled. I don't think anybody is looking on the other side to take it to trial. So everyone's why we get a letter saying like
Here's more.
Here's more.
So here's my next question is just if there are concerns, I mean, I'll need to review the what the AG's sense that these, that something like a stabilization account, which also in the guidance that we sent, was sort of identified as a potential option. Where there was some council oversight, is there a reason why that is not something that you see as a viable option for this sort of for dispersing these funds?
From the perspective of my office, time. It's time and it's about time. It's about the time it takes to get it. The money in the process. And I'm not, you know, saying it's a horrible work time. Um, the money and the process and I'm not, you know, saying it's a horrible work kind. Um, it's also about the ability to collaborate um in a very fluid, real-time way with other communities and other organizations like Tapestry.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and get those, I mean, we can give them thirty thousand dollars and we will have anonymous um healthcare service to anybody in our. Streets and fentanyl and whatnot. Uh, and and that can have have a literally split. Um, and and so that's for my purpose, like, that's how I feel about it. And also, you know, sure, I think about other mayors and and what they could have been do. Um. I will say, it it is really easy with pretty quick transitions in municipal government to lose track of where the dollars are and where they should go, and not because of malfeasance. It's just we set things up the way we are. There's always documentation, but if someone doesn't literally get the memo and that documentation isn't in a system, it's a deep dive or or if it's really busy, it goes to the side. Um, and I like that this this what I put forward is one efficient on time, but also very much in line with what the A G asked D O R and D L S to put together a tool. That said, I would defer um to Hadal on like structures of different accounts. So when you say, well, why not the stabilization? So my my position on the stabilization account is exactly what I just said.
Mm-hmm.
Um, accounting wise, I, you know, I mean, Hadal, I said, hey, I want to go do this, but, you know, she could have I ask for your opinion on the different ways this money can be treated accounting wise.
So uh referring to the same um bulletin from D O and D L S D O R, uh bulletin twenty twenty-three dash seven. Um, prior to this, we had some bulletins when D O R, D L S didn't agree what to do with this fund. So any revenue coming into the community that has to go to the general fund unless it's specified. There are some exceptions to this master rule law, and they didn't come up with it with any of um the how to treat the opioid money in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Created a special revenue account. There is no guidelines. So they were like, are we going to be in trouble? No, it it there is no guidelines. You adopted a special revenue, that's fine. You you're recording the revenue. Some communities decided to put into the stabilization account. So when finally in twenty twenty-four fiscal year, this was in December of twenty twenty-three, D O R came up with their regulation. We have these three options under um this and, you know, it pretty much says that if you have, if a community has a settlement fund in a stabilization fund but did not dedicate for future settlement receipts, the money currently in stabilization can be placed directly into the special revenue fund. If you um if prior year settlement funds have not otherwise been reserved that is uh dedicated to stabilization fund or become part of the certified free cash, then those funds may be placed directly into special revenue. Stabilization, we want you to put it totally separate into a special revenue fund and control it from there. They're going to come up with more stricter audit regulation. Um, so they are asking us to keep it totally separate. All the revenue and expenditures go through from one fund, and it will be easier for them to pick and say, this is what we're looking for. We're not going to dissect your general fund revenues or expenditures.
So just to be a hundred percent clear, I am in no way suggesting that these should be in the general fund. Definitely not.
It it's a stricter, yeah.
Yeah, definitely, absolutely.
My understanding from the thing I read, and perhaps it's because I'm not much of an accountant, um, although some people think I am, um, is that uh I thought my understanding was that this is an option for where we could put the funds, but that we could also put the funds into a stabilization account, not the general, but into an opioid stabilization account.
That was the first rule.
Okay.
Go for it. We haven't said the role. That's what this, literally, that's what they said, March of twenty twenty-two, I think, when I went to the nonprofits. And they were like, we we don't have any plans for this. But now they have a specific guidelines where they're specifically saying, if you ever put it into stabilization, close that stabilization, it says here. Um, if already dedicated to a stabilization fund, said dedication can be revoked at any time by vote of the legislative body. Upon revocation, all statewide opioid settlement received previously received may be placed in the special revenue fund.
Yeah, but you're this this says can and may. It doesn't say that we have to.
Well, so where so then the the question rises is then if we are not doing the special revenue, where are we going to put it?
Well, the thought would be that we could put it in a dedicated stabilization fund.
Which I would say isn't that nice? So say you get a councillor or a mayor who's like, yeah, we're not going to put it into there. We're not going to appropriate it into a stabilization account. We're just going to leave it in the general fund. Everything helps people get better if the money's in the fund. So make them come audit us.
Yeah.
I mean, I that is my biggest fear with this.
Mm-hmm.
And and it and I've seen it while, I will say, our auditor um is excellent at her job and her precision sometimes drives me through the roof because I am not an accountant, nor do I ever want to be one. Um, it's a big report. Tracking, yeah, tracking, I know, I I I I don't know. I'll I'll say it's A I to somebody. Um, the way we track the money, while it is elaborate, and I can't wait for it to be in a program. Um, we have money appropriately like pentucked to what the the city wants to to spend it on. Um, and it's trackable. So I I really like this idea. I think there's.
I I I'm supportive of having this done the way that it is. I think that the A G has created guidelines for this. I also think that our treasurer and our auditor have articulated that there's going to be a process by which they're going to be audited and guidelines in which they have to kind of go about this and and in in order to spend that. So and from the mayor's perspective, it sounds like sometimes there's a need and opportunity for community partnership, and sometimes those things just have to move quickly. And so in this particular instance, I think if we spend time bringing it to council, coming back you know, then I think that's missed opportunity to reach the community. And so I'm I would be in favor of of creating this fund as is, to be able to be nimble and be able to kind of reach community in a faster way. And I'm less concerned at this point after hearing kind of what they've had to say about people doing inappropriate things with those funds, but it sounds like with this revolving fund as it is, then there's there's a a a dedicated amount of money that goes towards this and it doesn't get mixed in with the general fund or any other things, et cetera. And so it just, to me, seems like what I understand, there's clearer guidance and there's clearer oversight in in the use of those funds. So I I would be in favor of.
Thank you. I I agree with with councillor Denham. Um, if the treasurer and the auditor are comfortable with this, I am certainly know far less than their treasurer, I'm very comfortable with this. I'm gonna defer to them on this. So I am also in support of this as is.
Well, I still have some reservations, but it sounds like a majority of this committee uh is feeling good about it, and I don't want to gum things up. So um, given that there's a large group of people who are making this very uh distracting, uh, I would entertain a a motion to uh establish this account uh for the purpose of receiving funds from the uh uh pursuant to the provisions of uh F G L, chapter thirty-four, section fifty-three, clause four uh for the purposes of receiving funds. Zero. Um, and then uh since we we can bring that up, uh assuming that that does pass the full council, I would also recommend a motion or uh entertain a motion to uh appropriate uh the fifty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-one cents of free cash to said revolving account. So hold. Motion second, all in favor? Stay on that one as well. Um, that's all. We've got five minutes to spare. So well done, everybody. Um, entertain a motion to adjourn. So for a second, all in favor? Aye.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.